Good evening, welcome to Canyon City Planning Commission Wednesday, October 26, 2022. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Denise, are you there? Do you want to call roll for us?
Well, I am. If I could figure out how to unmute my...
We got, we hear you.
Okay. All right. Chairman Maloney?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Ladue? Commissioner Moss? Commissioner Soother?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here. If you can hear me?
Yep, we got you.
We got you.
Got you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks Denise.
Sure.
Item number two, approval of minutes. I now ask for approval of minutes from the September 22 special meeting, 2022. Are there any changes or concerns? Now ask for a motion in a second to approve those minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
And was that Commissioner Soother that second?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Soother?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement? Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item 3A is a public hearing, proposed ordinance, an ordinance of the city of Canyon City amending certain section of Title 17 of the Canyon City Municipal Code concerning permitted uses, parking, and definitions, and adding an administrative determinations section. Applicant is the city of Canyon City. Location is all incorporated areas within Canyon City. Now open this public hearing. The provisions of the city municipal code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations, and the comprehensive plans of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as if set forth verbatim. May we please have a staff report?
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I handed out before the meeting an updated version of the ordinance we're talking about. I discovered as I was preparing my notes for this presentation this evening that the draft of the ordinance that was included in your agenda packet did not include the language pertaining to in-lu fees on parking for downtown. So I hurriedly prepared a copy of this for you and left it at your tables. Commissioner Smith, I apologize, since you're joining us remotely, I was not able to get that to you, but I'm more than happy to email you a copy of this after the meeting this evening if you'd like. But otherwise, the version you have has everything else except the parking in-lu fees. So with that, let me commence my presentation. Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, this evening we are conducting a public hearing on a draft ordinance which, as written, would make nine changes to the city's Unified Development Code, or UDC. Planning Commission members may recall that at the time the city's UDC was adopted in the fall of 2021, it was explained that once the code became effective, it may be clear that despite the best efforts of everyone reviewing the new code, some items might simply be omitted or found not to be working as well as intended. So an ordinance updated the code post-adoption was understood to be likely. This is the third of what staff has come to call the omnibus fix to the UDC. The first of the nine changes involves replacement language in Section 1705040A6. The new language clarifies that where any identified use in the use table shown in Chapter 1703 of the UDC lists a specific performance standard to be found in Chapter 1705, that standard applies whether the use is permitted, conditional, or special review. This language replaces language pertaining to uses not listed in Chapter 1705. This is because uses not listed is being addressed later in a new section of the draft ordinance with the creation of an administrative determinations section. More on that subject will be introduced a little later in this presentation. Okay, Changes 2, 3, and 4 are related to one another in that they involve certain uses within the CB Central Business District downtown. Currently, medical and dental clinic and professional office are not permitted at all in the Central Business District. This is a problem because the city already has many of these uses along Main Street, making them legal non-conforming in nature. The proposed change would allow these uses as conditional uses in the CB Central Business District zone, thus creating a pathway to allow these uses. The draft ordinance then establishes a use-specific standard for both use types. 170508OB would pertain to medical and dental clinics, and 170509OC would pertain to professional office uses. In both cases, the specific performance standard would make such uses principally permitted in the CB district that they are located above the ground floor. The reason these changes are proposed has to do with the intent of the CB Central Business District as stated in Section 1702030A2C. CB Central Business District is intended to foster the continued economic vitality of Canyon City's historic downtown and to provide and preserve a central setting for pedestrian-oriented mixed-use development as well as cultural amenities. Now, in this context, pedestrian-oriented refers to the window shop appeal of ground floor uses, and as such encourages restaurants, bars and pubs, retail, and similar uses which activate the pedestrian realm with liveliness. Typical office uses, whether they are medical or dental clinics, or office-type uses such as insurance offices, accountants, lawyers' offices, banks, et cetera, while commercial in nature don't necessarily introduce that liveliness activation on the ground floor which the CB zone anticipates. Above-ground floor does not create a conflict, so above-ground floor locations are allowed to be permitted by right. By treating these uses as a conditional use permit on the ground floor, there is at least an administrative pathway for medical, dental, and office uses to become established in the CB zone and help fill vacancies that exist currently along Main Street. Proposed modification number five is a clarification regarding parking requirements in the CB Central Business District. Currently, the language in Section 1706010B1 exempts non-residential uses in the CB Central Business District from heeding a parking requirement. The ordinance proposes to add a Section 1706010B2, which clarifies that parking exemption within the CB Central Business District includes designated historic structures unless the structure is being expanded in some way. The reason this modification is necessary is that it has been staff's observation that there is an interest in the development community to update and modify buildings on Main Street, some of which are listed as historic structures. From the existing languages, it was unclear what interior modifications meant in the context of parking requirements along Main Street, and this modification clarifies that parking requirements are only triggered when there is an expansion to the floor area of a building, even in historic structure. The sixth proposed change to the UDC also pertains to parking requirements downtown on Main Street, and this is the provision that I handed the ordinance out to you earlier this evening for because the version you had in your packet did not contain this language. When the current UDC was adopted in 2021, the exemption from the parking requirements for non-residential uses within the CB Central Business District was continued, but that exemption, largely due to feedback from business owners along Main Street, was not extended to new residential uses on Main. All new above-ground residential development in the CB Central Business District was going to have to meet a 1.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit parking requirement. Now, as stated on the previous proposed change, staff has noticed an increased interest in developing new residential units in underutilized buildings along Main Street, but the parking requirement that comes with such new development is proving to be a complication the development community is having difficulty resolving. Although there are off-street parking areas to be found in the vicinity of Main Street, these are largely privately owned, and the owners are not willing to lease spaces to these developers to meet a parking requirement. What this proposed modification does is create a pathway to get around the parking requirement by giving a developer proposing to create new residences along Main Street an option to satisfy the off-street parking requirement by paying an in-lu fee per parking space. This would allow the developer to move forward with creating new residential units and provide the city with resources to acquire land that could be converted into off-street public Administrative determinations. As mentioned previously, the first proposed change eliminated the existing language in Section 1705040A6 pertaining to uses not listed. The seventh proposed change replaces that language with a new Section 1710010J administrative determinations. Chapter 1710 regulates zoning standards and procedures, and this new language creates a process for evaluating a proposed use within a zone district which might not be listed in the use tables in Chapter 1703. This process will evaluate the proposed use against similar types of uses in the particular zone district, the effect that setting a precedent might have on the surrounding neighborhood, and have these determinations made on a case-by-case basis. The new Section 1710010J also creates an appeals process should an applicant disagree with the findings of the zoning administrator so that the matter could be heard by Planning Commission and council. The eighth proposed change works in combination with the administrative determinations section in 1710010J. The proposed change amends the definition section of the UDC, Chapter 17.13. This proposed change creates a new paragraph, 1713010E, which indicates that any term not specifically defined in Chapter 1713 will be understood to be the common dictionary definition of the term. The reason for this proposed change is that it works in combination with the new administrative determinations section to ensure any proposed use which might not be enumerated in the use tables in Chapter 1703 nor defined in Chapter 17.13 will be understood to default back to its dictionary definition for an analysis of its likeliness to other uses that are permitted in the district. The ninth and final proposed change amends Chapter 1713 with the addition of a new definition, Waste transfer facility is defined as a facility used to temporarily store waste before it is transported to a recycling treatment or permanent waste disposal facility. This change is being made because with the prior Title 17 zoning regulations, nor the current UDC, this particular use was never contemplated with a definition. This recently became a topic of discussion when a zoning entitlement research firm contacted staff investigating a local waste transfer facility, and we discovered we didn't have a ready definition for this, so we are proposing one with this ordinance. Those conclude the nine proposed changes to Title 17. Per the notice requirements for text amendments to Title 17 as specified in 1710030C3D, this hearing has been advertised with a published notice on the city's website for at least 15 days prior to the Planning Commission hearing. Staff is recommending that Planning Commission recommend that city council approve the draft ordinance making nine amendments to Title 17. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that Planning Commission may have. I believe we also have our city attorney, who in fact drafted the ordinance, present to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Patrick. Any questions?
I do, sir.
All right.
Patrick, looking at the struck language out of this, Section 5, Number 2, and kind of viewing this in a reverse engineer thought process, we only have a couple of properties on the Main Street where you could actually add parking.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll use the bank that they just converted. There's a garden area there that literally could be expanded at some point in time if they chose to, to include that as parking. We don't have a concern about that type of property manipulation? I don't mean manipulation, but altering when it comes to the parking element?
Well, I believe, see, the parking requirements when it comes to non-residential uses are driven by the square footage of the facility. So if they increase the square footage and in fact eliminate that garden area at the particular bank you're talking about, I think we would want to have some questions with them about parking. Now, they're benefited by the fact that south of the alley that they abut on that lot, they own an entire parking field out there, and I think they are very well overparked based upon what their square footage would require, and I think even if they enclosed that garden area, what the parking requirement would be for that new addition. So I don't think you'd see much of an impact from that, but I get your point. And I guess our response is, again, the same thing would apply for parking in-lu fees. If it's physically impractical to put additional parking on a lot, the particular developer could negotiate with us for an in-lu fee and pay that to get around having to actually physically provide parking.
And basically, my point to that question is that the four words that are struck out of there where it says historic structures slash properties and their use, in a way I would kind of almost think we'd want to leave that part in there?
Well, I think what we're doing is eliminating the references of the fact that while there may be old buildings on Main Street, not all of them are designated historic structures, and I think we're trying to add that clarification.
Well, I got that part, except for, like I said, well, I'll use the building that's a little bit farther up, the oil building. There's space on that lot without expanding that building at all to put additional parking if they choose to, and we wouldn't have a concern in that if they chose to do that?
Well, I don't know. Why would they add parking if they're not expanding the building? The requirement would only be triggering if they're expanding a building.
Okay, I misunderstood that part. Okay, never mind then. Thank you.
Patrick, I had a question regarding the Main Street. It was the first part of this, just to make sure I'm understanding, that medical buildings and dental buildings, or dental offices, that before they could go into a space, they would have to come to the city, and then you would decide, or the city would decide, it's a conditional, so it's not an automatic, it's a conditional based on what is already on Main Street, and is it the right type of business to go onto Main Street? Is that...
Exactly. It is an administrative process. There are no hearings involved with it before Planning Commission or council, but what happens as part of this is that adjoining property owners are notified about this, and if they've got concerns about the fact that, okay, we've got this retail vibe going on, and we don't necessarily want it ruined with a lawyer's office, we want to keep people walking up and down our block and shopping, looking in windows, that sort of thing, they can raise those objections. It's not an automatic block to one of these office or medical and dental clinic type uses going in there, but it is a pause so that we can consider the context of the space where they're going.
Okay, thank you. And then the other one was the, I just don't understand it, actually. So the parking in-lu fees, and so the apartments that want to be built on Main Street on the second floor, they require one and a half spaces.
Per dwelling, yes.
Right? And we want to change that, and we're going to then make the business or the property manager pay for parking? That's, I'm not clear.
So what we have learned, and in fact, there's a specific example that I can think of off the top of my head, where you've got a building that's got two ground floor spaces, one of which is an accounting office, and then two upstairs, well, an upstairs space that could be redeveloped to become two dwelling units. The problem is, in order to do that, they'd have three parking spaces that they'd have to provide. We met with the potential investors on this property, we discussed that need, and their architect came back and said, well, we can't physically fit that on the property because the back of the property goes almost all the way to the alley. And we said, well, there are other private parking areas around you within a fairly close walking distance. Could you perhaps negotiate with the owners of those parking lots to see if they might be able to lease you a few spaces so that you could meet the parking requirement? And the answer to that was, no, they want those parking spaces reserved for their businesses. They are the private parking associated with their business, they don't want to have that whittled away by residential uses coming up. So the only other option that we can foresee is, okay, we don't want to remove the parking requirement, because we did get a lot of feedback while we were drafting this code that parking, as we get additional residential dwelling units built downtown, is going to increasingly become an issue. We've got local merchants who want their customers to be able to park right in front of their doors, they don't want residents who are living in upstairs units parking along Main Street. So our solution was, okay, you still got the parking requirement, but we will negotiate with you a fee that you can pay the city that will absolve you of having to actually physically provide the parking spaces yourself, and then the city will, as it accumulates these funds, go and acquire parking facilities off-street that can then be made public.
Was there any discussion about what, how much that fee might be?
That'll be a negotiation that happens at the time, and it'll be based upon some percentage below what it costs to actually physically build a parking space. The reason for that is, I think we want to encourage people to pay into a fund that the city can use to build public parking facilities downtown, rather than actually in a piecemeal fashion whittle away at buildings and properties downtown to provide parking for specific dwelling units. I don't know what that number looks like right now, but I know we've got a process in place that would allow for those negotiations to happen.
All right, well, I have, I'm going back to my other question, because you just said something that, to me, sounded the opposite of what you stated. If this only applies to an expansion of a building, that contradicts what you just said about changing the structure and creating more public parking.
Well, no. If you're talking about the upstairs of an existing building, you can convert upstairs space into dwelling units, where you've got plumbing, and you've got kitchens, and you've got central heating, and whatever else, without actually physically expanding the exterior of the building.
Right.
What we're saying is, all right, that's fine, and you're putting these dwelling units upstairs, which makes them permitted, they still come with a parking requirement. When we modified this code, when we adopted this code, we said, all right, we're no longer going to treat all uses downtown as exempt from creating parking. Residential uses must now meet a parking requirement. And what we're saying here is, as an option to actually having to physically locate parking spaces somewhere, either on their property or on someone else's property, as an option, that developer, that residential unit developer can pay an in-lu fee to the city and get around having to physically build parking spaces. The city will then take on that obligation.
Patrick?
Yes.
With the in-lu before the city actually builds...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Before the city actually builds a structure, do you think that there's adequate parking then if we get a lot more residential on the second floor? Or is that going to, you know, that interim period, because you're talking about the in-lu, and that's going to build more capacity for parking, but what happens if it takes several years before you get that money?
Well...
And it starts becoming very popular with the residents on the second floor?
I understand what you're saying, and yes, that is a concern. There may be some lag between when the city can actually physically go and acquire land versus when we begin seeing these new residential dwelling units coming into place along Main Street. Part of that is a policy discussion about what sort of a priority council wants to put on actually going and acquiring spaces, and we are working on something right now with the old laundromat in the 300 block of Main Street, where potentially, once we get through kind of an EPA evaluation of that site and how clean it is and what needs to be done to remediate it, that could potentially become parking that the city will own and maintain downtown. Part of this also has to do with the fact that from the city's perspective, having a resident population in place downtown to support these local businesses is very important, and we want to encourage that whenever we can. So if we can create a pathway to facilitate getting those in where we're not actually seeing physical parking get constructed, but the city is being provided with some resources to do that construction in the future, we see that as a benefit to the city.
Now, would the people that pay the in-lu for their one and a half space, would they be guaranteed parking at that facility then?
Yes, we could certainly negotiate that with them in the future.
I was just wondering if, you know, that would be part of the, part of the deal.
I mean, as public parking, I don't know that they would get reserved spaces, but we would size it hopefully to make sure that a certain percentage of the parking that's there is accounting for the deficit that was created when these new dwelling units went in downtown.
Patrick, can I jump in really quick?
Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So a couple of things I heard, just to put in my two cents, I think Patrick said it well. I would think of the parking in-lu as an off-ramp to the parking requirements, just as Patrick described. So if you aren't able to meet the parking requirements for whatever reason, you have met the criteria in that first subsection in the in-lu ordinance, then you are eligible for this in-lu. So it's not a requirement, it's an off-ramp to the requirement, so I just wanted to make that clear. And then as far as the fees, you'll see later down in the ordinance, it will be set by resolution of the city council, just like any other impact fee. So it would be consistent in that manner. And then as far as where they're provided, the ordinance also addresses that it has to be in a similar location to where the in-lu fee was taken. So ideally, you're not getting fees in the northern part of the city and then putting the parking on the southern part of the city. Ideally, they're close to the location to which the in-lu fee was captured. And the last thing I heard, I just wanted to touch on, was the cleanup language in the historic designation section had to do with ensuring that the exception applies to the entire property, no matter the use. And so that's what the change there does, that strike through you were mentioning. It means that no matter what the historic designation is, it could be a bed and breakfast, it could be a single-family dwelling, that exception applies to the entire property regardless of the use.
Well, I guess that's where I, in my mind, I thought that language probably still applied, because just like you said, regardless of the use, that still applies, and that's why I thought not striking that made sense, but I'm fine with it.
And bear in mind, if a residential development wants to happen in the CB Central Business District, and that's where the applicability for these in-lu fees is, and they can physically provide parking, they don't have to pay an in-lu fee, they can just build the parking.
Which isn't going to happen in Central Business District. There's not a lot of spots.
It is unlikely to, and part of the reason we're doing this in-lu fee is an acknowledgement of the practicalities associated with physically locating new parking facilities to accommodate residential growth.
Yeah, so we should definitely promote residential growth as much as possible, because, I mean, you can't have, it has to happen, so parking has to be painful for a while. That's just how it goes.
So I'm assuming there that business owners are okay with this in-lu fee, recognizing that it could be two or three years down the road before a parking lot is identified?
Well, I think they're okay with the fact that new residential development is going to have to provide parking in some fashion. We haven't specifically discussed the in-lu concept with them yet, but they are very much in favor of new residential growth having to provide parking in some capacity, and if that capacity is delayed because there's an in-lu fee paid that the city will collect and then actually go and physically locate parking somewhere else in the CB district, so be it. so be it.
How do they find out about this in-lu fee, business owners on Main Street?
Well, it's not applicable to them for their uses because they're non-residential. But if they're interested, I mean, obviously, as a matter of notice, it has been posted to the city's website, and they can certainly contact me with questions. This was something that came up recently within the last couple of months because a couple of different residential proposals that were popping up along Main Street.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just one.
Question?
Was that you, Randy?
Go ahead, Dee.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm still here. Go ahead, Dee.
Okay. I was just curious about the definition portion. I mean, what led to that, that we have to use a dictionary to define terms? I feel like there's a story there.
Well, what tends to happen is that there's a use that's not specifically defined, we get into a protracted debate with someone who thinks, well, it should mean this, versus a representative of the city who says, no, it should mean this. So we just want to make it clear, if it's not specifically defined in 1713, okay, we default back to what the dictionary says, so that we can just end those petty debates.
Okay, thank you, Patrick.
Because bat means bat, regardless of what ball you're hitting with it.
Randy, did you have something to say?
Kid, I have my hand up for 13 minutes now. Can you see my little hand?
We're not looking that way.
It's good exercise.
All right. I just want some clarification. CB Zone, the Central Business Zone, is that First Street down to Ninth Street? Is that how?
It is First Street to Ninth Street on Main, and then in some cases, it goes a block north to Macon, and in some cases, it goes a block south to RGV, but it's a very small section where it touches Royal Gorge Boulevard.
That was going to be my second question, for something like Saint Cloud, I thought a couple of years ago, the city was going to try and nego... ...behind the Saint Cloud. I don't know if that's still in play.
So the Saint, the Saint Cloud actually owns the parking field that's on the north side of the alley from them, and that is going to be used for the hotel, again, because it's a hotel, but that's not a residential classification of use, therefore, they don't specifically have a parking requirement, but they are enhancing their parking along both Main Street and Seventh Street, and they will have that parking field behind them as well.
So I've noticed in the past as well, around the third, fourth, fifth block and all that, that some of the residents on the second floor, on the south side, a lot of those residents park in the alley, on the, of South Alley Alley. Is that going to count as part of that, the fee? Or are they expected to park on the actual Main Street?
If it's an existing, if it's an existing residence, in other words, it's not something new that's been created since this ordinance went into effect in 2021, those residences are now legal non-conforming, and therefore, the parking arrangements that they have are not going to be touched by this ordinance.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm going to bring my little hand down.
You say it's tough holding it, my old yip, huh?
I know.
Does it come down?
My hand is officially down, but it's not down, so.
Stick it back up.
We'll just continue to ignore you.
Yeah, just ignore my hand.
All right, any other questions? Just for clarification, do we just need a motion and a second to recommend approval to City Council on this?
Yes. Motion, second, and vote.
Okay. So if there's no other discussion, there's nobody in the audience, there's no one else online, is that correct? Okay, I'll close this public hearing, I'll ask for a motion and a second to recommend approval to City Council.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission recommend City Council adopt the attached draft ordinance, making nine modifications to the city's Title 17 Unified Development Code.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Suthar. Any further discussion? Denise, will you please call roll?
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Suthar?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
And Commissioner Spith?
Aye.
All right, thanks, Denise.
His hands down.
I think that's all we got tonight.
Just a couple of announcements for you. Just to put this on your radar, I believe December 13th, I think that's a Thursday, that will be the night of the Board and Commission Recognition Dinner at the Abbey, similar to what we did last year. So just making sure that you circled the date on your calendar, I think formal invitations, if they haven't already gone out, should be going out very soon. Our November and December Planning Commission dates, from the calendar that we put together at the beginning of the year, if we have to meet, the meeting for November would be Thursday, the 17th, because if we moved it forward one week to Wednesday, the 16th of November, would clash with Council's regular Vision Committee meeting in terms of schedules and the use of this room. So we put it for November 17th. At this time, I do not have anything going forward to that hearing. The December meeting, because that would actually be happening the week between Christmas and New Year's, and I don't know if there's actually going to be, if we're going to be able to pull a quorum for that meeting. If we have to have one in December, it was scheduled for December 21st, and as we get closer to that date, if we do have a public hearing, I will let you know. And then I also wanted to let you know that the 2023 Planning Commission calendar, I should be finished with that in the next week or so, I will email it to you, and then it will be an attachment at our first meeting in 2023, the schedule for submittal dates, and then when the Planning Commission hearings are going to occur. The final item has to do with the Abbey preliminary plan. Now that the developer for this project has gotten their approvals for the Loves Traffic or Travel Plaza and the RV Park at Four Mile and Highway 50, they are returning their attention back to the Abbey, and we should be getting a preliminary plan. Their concept at this point is that they want to make a submittal in early November so that they will be able to hit a January Planning Commission date. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that this will be coming, and that part of what will be happening with this preliminary plan, because it is so large and will have so many public improvements associated with it, there will be some master agreements that come along with this to talk about triggers for certain public improvements that will be required, regardless of the final plats and the order of the final plats come in. So be aware that this is going to be slightly different than the preliminary plans you have seen heretofore. And when we get to that point in the hearing process, I will explain those in greater detail. But that is all from staff.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? No? Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.